Ready over there? Okay, good to go. Everybody's good to go. Everybody's good to go.
Absolutely.
Everybody out there is good to go.
What are we gonna do?
I don't know. This is the revised agenda. I have no idea what I'm gonna see.
Keeps going to tell us.
The first question is, what is the date? June 7th. So, welcome everyone to the June 7th Medfield Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person and members of the public may attend in person. And we have members of the public attending in person. In addition, anyone who would like to join remotely can participate on Zoom. And what you need to do is go to the Medfield website, check the agenda for this evening's Board of Selectmen meeting, and there is a link there for you to join in. With that, I'll jump right in. Oh, the other point is that we are, this meeting is being recorded by Medfield TV and will be broadcast, so everything will come over. Medfield TV. For people in the audience, if you want to say anything, we'll ask you to use the microphone to identify yourself. We don't need the microphone so we can hear you. We need the microphone so that the audio track going out of Medfield TV works. So, you won't think the microphone's doing anything, but it really is. Okay. To begin with, I'd like to take a moment of appreciation for just recognizing our troops serving around the world to defend our country. Thank you. And I would also like to just acknowledge that Medfield's lost a friend of the town, an untimely banner, Rachel Brown, unfortunately passed away this past week, and sorry to hear that. There is a, I'm doing this off my memory, the UCC Church has a session, I believe, on Sunday, and then there's also another event on Monday. So, for anyone who's interested, those are the two opportunities in the next few days to pay your respects.
She was such an expert on personnel matters.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just astonishing to me.
Yep. Okay, let's move on with our first appointment. Our first appointment is Roberta Lynch, the Council on Aging Director, to provide an update. Take it away, Roberta. Yeah, of course you do.
You're good up there, Roberta.
Drum, we need to-
It's not my favorite place to be.
Yeah, we need the, we need the recording that has a drum roll to introduce our speakers, but-
For like 21 years, I've loved this. Okay, so you wanna update on the COA. I just wanna start backtracking to 2019 because that was like a banner year for us. We served over, I thought, well, we served exactly, according to the computer, 1,065 people that were coming in and out of the building. We held 24,800 duplicated events, and our duplicated number of peoples we served was 29,000. Our average daily participation was 84, and on Saturdays it was 61.
What is a duplicated event?
So duplicated is, event is like, if we have 15 exercise classes a week, right? So 15 times 52 weeks.
Okay, got it. Okay.
2020 and 2021 were really challenging years for everybody, and when I think back about it, it really seemed to be a blur. I just know that I went into work every day because I, I just, that's what I do. I go to work every day. We had a little recap. We had grab-and-go events during that time. Our chocolate tasting was grab-and-go. Our St. Patty's Day party dinner was grab-and-go. We did special drive-through events. Parking lot cookouts, which were a lot of fun. I remember Mr. and Mrs. Fellini brought their chairs and their little tables. They sat out in the parking lot with everybody and they, they, we had a music. It was great. One of the big things we did, looking back, 2021, was the vaccine appointments. We worked tirelessly getting vaccine appointments for seniors. Even to this day, we're still scheduling boosters for people. So, in 20, now you wanna update for this year, 2022, there's still a hesitation of people coming into the center, and I see this with our average daily participation is at 62 compared to the 84, and our Saturdays are running around 33. But that's a dedicated group of people that come in on Saturdays, and dedicated people Monday through Friday. So, we're serving just over, right now, 700 individuals that are coming into the center this year, 2022. This year, we have the AARP Tax Aid Program. We've had that many years, and they completed 80 tax returns this year for folks. Last year, in 2021, we did 61. So, I, we have the Tax Work Off Program that's running again. We did not have, to have, we did not have to have a lottery this year. We only had 61 people apply. Again, I think that was hesitation because of COVID. I, I'm assuming, I know there are some changes in real estate taxes, and I'm assuming that in the fall, we might have, you know, again, that 85, 90 people that apply for the program. Although, we could think about, the Selectmen could think about raising the tax work-off amount to 1,500, which is the limit that you can go with the state. So, that's something I just throw out there. Let's see. The, having Brenda Haley as our public health nurse coming into the center on Wednesdays has been extremely helpful. She's seen over 60 residents at this point. Some of them come in weekly to see her, which is, is wonderful to have that option and have her in the building. So, it's really been very helpful. We have 202 people participating in our exercise classes. We have 11 classes weekly, and our club program is still doing very well. We have 12 participants in the club program. It is going through a little bit of transition because our staff that was with the program for 10 years and eight years, Kathy Powers and Trish Pembroke, they did leave the end of April, and we have new staff, Elaine Owens and Ann Hunter, and so it's going through a little transition. So, fingers crossed, everything continues to go positively because it is a wonderful program. And, and I say this to my board, and I'll say to anyone who wants to come down and see that program in action, it really is quite remarkable, and it does very good work for families and for their loved one. And that's my update. Oh, oh, the other thing is, the board today just approved, they agreed or approved the proposal from Paul McHeckney for our repair of our brick areas in the front and back of the building, and then the walkway going from the flagpole side of the building around to the back patio. So, that's pretty exciting.
Did you get a company command to cut the lawn? I know you, we talked about that when I dropped in.
Oh, yeah. So, I, I did. I worked with Nick Milano, and I have a college student who's going to be cutting the lawn. So, we kind of worked it, worked it as a temporary seasonal position.
So, see the young gentleman I sent on that Saturday?
Dennis Follen? Yes. What a nice young man. Yeah.
He's now a temporary seasonal employee.
Good.
Council on Aging.
Yeah, and he's on, and he's only with us till like the third weekend, August, because he plays baseball for, he'll be playing baseball for college, so he has to go off. So, I am looking for a landscaper who will do landscaping and snow shoveling for the COA. So, if anybody's listening to this and knows anyone, have them come and see me because I'll need someone in August. So, we start all over again.
Because our new Building and Grounds Committee will not be formalized until next year.
But once it is, I'm sure they will jump on.
Oh, but I won't be here for that. Dang.
Just stay.
Yeah. So, that's it. Any questions for me?
No, as I mentioned in our last, I had a chance to sit down with Roberta to reach one on vacay, so that chance got caught up.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Pete?
Pete? So, you just said you won't be here, so do you wanna tell people your plans?
So, my plans are to retire the end of December and spend a lot of time with my seven grandchildren. That's my plans. Yes, all good.
That works great for you.
Yeah, yeah. They're 10 years down to one and a half, so it'll be a lot of fun. Yep.
My only comment, Roberta, although you mentioned that the last two years have been a blur, I think that the Council on Aging, it's a challenge to know what to do when everybody's locked down and nobody's there, and nobody can tell you what they need, and you can't see them. As, from my perspective, the COA, almost, maybe invisibly in a sense, but in, in a lot of ways, the things that you were doing, I have no doubt, made a huge difference to a lot of people when everybody's isolated at times like that. It, it takes a certain art to be able to anticipate what people need because they're probably not gonna tell you. You can't actually interact with them. And I have considered for two years that one of the, one of the most important things this town has done, largely just through your initiative, is to make sure that one segment of our population that could easily have been damaged pretty heavily with everything that went on in two years.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You did what you could to make sure that that, it was a better experience than it would have otherwise been.
I will say our phone bill went up during those two years because we played Conference Call Bingo twice a week, and that, yeah, that's crazy. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay. Next, we have Kevin Ryder, Parks and Rec, to provide an update. See if you can match that, Kevin.
Well, I'm not retiring, so I can start all with that.
That's good, okay.
So, since I last saw you guys, what's that?
Are you shy?
Am I shy?
Shy and retiring?
About a, a year or so, maybe. I look like I probably should retire with my hair, but, anyway, since I last saw you in October, just to give you some, some basic updates, we ran our middle school ski club for the first time in, in a couple of years because of the pandemic. Our registration sold out in 24 minutes. We took 154 kids on three coach buses over six weeks up to Nishoba Valley, and that doesn't include a couple dozen people we had on the waitlist that couldn't, we couldn't take. It's always been a super popular program, but never sold out that quick, and it was one of the constant questions I kept getting during the pandemic is, are you gonna do the ski club? You gonna do the ski club? And, no, we can't go on buses. No, they're not open. So, we were ecstatic about that. You know, on top of that, we went on a number of field trips on half-days and no-school days, various places around Metro West, from Altitude in Franklin to Urban Air in Bellingham, taking busloads of kids every time, 30 to 40 kids on those trips without even, there were times, we literally put something together at the last minute, and parents signed up immediately to send their kids. So, saw a lot of people wanting to have that social interaction for their kids. So, we were happy.
What is altitude in Urban Air?
Ah, trampoline parks, indoor trampoline parks, indoor, like Ninja Warrior, stuff that the kids do, and I sit there and watch and make sure they don't get hurt because I surely will get hurt if I go and attempt it with that. Our spring sports, some of them are starting to wrap up this week. Amazing response to, to what we did. If you're there on a Saturday, we start micro soccer at 8 o'clock in the morning, which is for like four- and five-year-old kids that are before pre-K age groups. We hired four of the ladies from the high school soccer team to, to coach those. So, shout out to them for the fall and the spring to get four seniors in high school to get up at 7 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday to run those for us, and they did it without hesitation, which, which is great. And they all worked for me in the summer, too. So, stand-up, stand-up ladies that did that for us. All the programs are run on Saturdays. Place is absolutely banged out, is the best way to say it. Cars everywhere. And we even dialed back some of the programs we actually run on Saturdays to try and accommodate for the amount of parking that we would need. We could use an entire new parking lot down there to, double-decker parking lot to take care of all the cars that are trying to get down there. In addition, this spring, we completed a, we replaced the bleachers over at Meta Comet, and that was in conjunction with Medfield Youth Baseball, who fundraised for the entire project. And we had a company that came out. We dismantled the entire old bleachers and then put in these brand-new bleachers, which looked, looked great, a major upgrade to what was over there before, which were falling apart probably for the last 10 years. So, this, this was an initiative that Medfield Youth Baseball contacted me about, and we were happy to jump on board and, and help out in any way we could. So, that, that was a major thing that we got done. We continue to do field improvements and renovations, although you wouldn't be able to tell right now with the water ban going on how bad our fields look currently, but we continue to strive to keep our fields to be among the best, if not the best, in the Metro West. Summer camp, we, for the first time in probably, I mean, I've been doing this 20-plus years, first time I've had trouble hiring staff. This, this finally hit us, where it hit a lot of other communities over the last two to three years. It finally trickled down to us that we just had a tough time getting staff to, to, to work this summer. We're finally at about the point where we're roughly, I would say, within eight to 10 councils of where we normally would be for our summer camp. I purposely always over-hire our summer camp staff to have this filler program going on with younger kids, replacing our matriculating students that are sophomores or juniors in college that will eventually have to leave us. So, we've always over-hired. This will be the first year where, where we're more in line with our state regulations as far as where those minimums have to be than over-hiring as we have in the past. Still interviewing, still accepting applications. We actually had three interviews today, so we're still actively pursuing staff, but it's the first year that, that we've had that struggle, and, and part of it, we hire the best kids, and, and we know that. We, kids that are often doing great things, and a lot of them got opportunities this summer for internships and other opportunities in their chosen field of study. Many of whom I wrote letters of recommendation for to, to get those positions. So, we're happy, I'm happy, to see them, you know, often succeeding in the world. But with that, trying to backfill those positions, and, and it's the first time we've had a real struggle.
What's, what's the age target that you have there?
So, for the first time ever, I'm hiring 15-year-olds to, to work at our camp. I've never hired 15-year-olds to, it's always been at least 16 to work at, at the camp. For the first time ever, we're hiring 15-year-olds to, to work this summer.
Does it go up through, is that through high school or through college?
So, we will keep staff on as, as long as they're willing to work. I think the oldest I have this year is, will be a junior in the fall, a junior in college in the fall.
Okay.
Typically, those, I do have two or three staff that just graduated, but they're going into education, so they're looking to be teachers. So, this is a, a natural position to be in, in the summer for them. I mean, they're part of our leadership team for, for our summer camps. But we do have students that are up until, and will be entering their junior year in college. So, we have a wide range of staff that we hire. We are at about, well, we're basically full for our summer camps. Our registrations are at or above where we were last summer, which is, last summer was our busiest summer we've ever had to date. So, we're at or above where we were last summer as well. So, a lot of interest. We have waitlists that I could fill another camp with the amount of people we have on our summer waitlist. So, people that we unfortunately won't be able to take into camp this summer just because we don't have enough staff to accommodate that. We also don't have enough space to accommodate that, so we run into a double-edged sword where we have two things going against us that we're just not able to, we can't make more space, and I can't make more staff. So, there will be some families, unfortunately, that won't be able to take part in our summer camp. Opening the swim pond on June 17th, which is a Friday, lifeguard staffing is, is about at where we were last year. We're probably about three shy of, of our staff last year. Again, I just talked to someone else today that was interested in learning about being a lifeguard. So, that has been, we're, we're still in a really good spot with lifeguards. A lot of other communities are not getting lifeguards because either classes weren't happening to get certified, and lifeguarding isn't something you can do over Zoom. You can't, you can't get those skills over Zoom. You have to be in person to get those skills. So, thankfully, over the last two to three years during the pandemic, when we were still open the pond, I had staff that were already certified, and I only needed to get recertified, which we were able to do in person in small classes. We'll open, like I said, on the 17th. We'll run till August 23rd. So, that's, you know, about 10 and a half weeks or so that the swim pond will be opened. Mo, Bobby, and the, and the rest of the DPW did the process this weekend, draining the pond, cleaning off the bottom of the pond, and adding, I think I got nine tons of sand from, from the Cape to fill in and, and fill in our beach and make it look nice and pretty. So, that should start to be filling up this week. Docks will be in place next week, and, and we'll be ready, ready to go next Friday. So, that's kind of our basic update for, for what's going on at Park and Rec.
As a former Park and Rec waterfront director, I'm like, that's old days.
What are you doing this summer?
I'm the waterfront director.
So, how big a pile is nine tons of sand?
We, we had multiple deliveries coming through.
Multiple dump trucks.
Multiple, multiple dump trucks on Friday coming through, and, and the parking lot basically became sand dunes for, for the better part of Friday. But Bobby, Mo, and their staff do a great job helping us out, and, and you wouldn't notice except for a little layer of sand at, at the very back end of the parking lot, that there was even sand dropped at our parking lot over the weekend. So.
Great.
Yeah.
The only specific question I had, and I think Eileen, you had mentioned Heaven Go, I'm just curious whether they're the Hinckley helpers with the playground, whether there's anything that, I think you went to their event as well. I'm just kinda curious how, how those three things work.
That event went great. I even told the, the group when I was there, I was amazed at the turnout, absolutely floored by how many people. It looked like, I was telling Mel, it looked like one of our summer nights at the pond with how many people were there. Double parking, legally, but double parking in the parking lot, every spot was filled. Food trucks came out. People raved about the, the food trucks that were there. The event was, I, I would deem it an amazing success, and it showed the interest that the community has in, A, learning more about the project, but B, supporting the project as well. So, I think it, it gave them amazing momentum to start, you know, where, where they were kinda starting at this, this low point, where, where, how are we gonna get the word out? And they got the word out, and, and the response was tremendous.
That's great.
Kevin and I, we met on Friday with Kelly and Ashley, and if you weren't already excited about this project, spend 15 minutes with them, and it is the best project ever. So, super exciting to be involved with, and Kevin and I are trying to help them move forward as quickly as possible. And I know we've talked about some couple options of where the town can assist in that, so we'll talk, start talking about that in July.
That actually came up at my meeting out with the county.
Oh, great. Good.
They mentioned, it was like a day after you'd talked.
I put it on their radar.
On someone's mind. The fact that it spontaneously came up in a very, in a positive sense while recognizing that there might still be challenges, but I took that as a good sign because I didn't raise it.
Excellent. That's very good.
Yeah. And Kevin, I'm just curious, so with it, with, like with, you said with the camp, if you had a place to go and staff to do it, you could have had a second camp. This is the consultant in me. I'm, I'm curious whether we have more kids that are camp out, whether the population has grown, or whether you're getting more market share of the potential kids. So, what's driving that?
So, I think we've always had a very strong market share, to be honest. I think we've always really hit with the, the people that are looking for camp. I think there's more families, younger families moving into town and older families moving out that aren't in our age bracket, so they're not part of our demographic. I also think, for a couple years, there was still people hesitating to send their kids into those situations, even though we were outside a majority of the time. We were super safe. We never had a COVID issue during any, the two years that we ran camp during COVID. I still think there was hesitation by some families that weren't ready to send their kids. Now that they've gone through the cycle a couple of times, they've gone through school, you know, predominantly without masks this past year, I think there was a larger interest this year in getting their kids involved. I did notice it was more, looking at the, the breakdown, it's definitely more people looking for select weeks versus like an entire eight-week summer. So, definitely seeing a lot more families that are, are planning vacations this summer, if not multiple vacations this summer, after not doing anything the last couple of years. So, definitely seeing that. But I think we've always had a very strong market share for the ages that we offer. I think it's, it's also the product we deliver, and, and it's, it, I have a hand in it, but the staff that we, we bring in to run these activities and do the day-to-day activities with the kids, second to none. I'd, I'd put them up against any camp that, that's out there. So, I think that reputation's getting out there more and more with people that, if you want a quality camp for an affordable price, that, that Park and Rec is doing it. So.
For sure. Last question. Recognizing that the school project was delayed, and there were at least some possibilities of where Park and Rec would go if it had not been, if it had gone through, looking at the FAF Center and recognizing that there's probably a longer, maybe incrementally longer, but there's a longer period that you're probably gonna be relying on there. Are there any new issues? If we think about the FAF Center being used for a longer period of time than we might have been thinking about it being used a year ago, are there any issues that we need to be thinking about?
How much time you got?
Your top three.
So, if you, if you walk in right now, the first room on our left is our kitchen. There's no longer a kitchen there, so that's been totally gutted over the last month or so. We had, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we had a flood from the roof, and a flood took out our, took out our kitchen. So, through insurance funds, our kitchen's getting redone. I'm sweating it out a little bit right now because we start camp on the 27th, and right now I have a shell of nothing, and it's, it is a, a major part of our camp because a space for us to have, to, to get water for activities that we're doing, we need a kitchen. So, on top of just a place for staff to put their belongings during the course of the day. So, so kitchen is one. The windows were replaced eight to 10 years ago, so those are fine, but we're definitely seeing more of the brick facade coming, coming apart and, and bigger gaps in there. seeing more of the brick facade coming apart and bigger gaps in there. The roof needs to be looked at at some point because it's a flat roof and when you get the trees and the leaves and debris coming down from the trees go on the roof, we get heavy rain and they clog the drains, the heavy rain backs up and we got the flood that damaged our kitchen, but also came into our, a couple of our activity rooms that we run activities for the kids in, as well as our main hall, and you can see the water damage in the ceiling when you walk down. Additionally, we had an issue this past winter on a Sunday, got a call from Chief Carrico that we had water spewing from one of our outdoor faucets that just cracked. So again, it's old, you know, things are gonna happen. We do the best we can with what we got and we make it work as best as we can, but it's putting Band-Aids on gashes and still expecting it to be okay, you know, so.
Yeah, what I was getting at, I'm not trying to backdoor renovation of FAF, but I'm thinking that if you make one set of decisions when you think we're going to be out of here soon, you'd make another set of decisions if you thought we're never going to be out of here for the foreseeable future. And then you have this thing in the middle that says, well, we're still planning to be out of here, but not quite as fast as we thought and there might be a different set of needs that are prudent, but with a slightly longer.
I mean, one of the things I've always talked to Mike Sullivan previously and Christine now is anything that we do there is something we want to be able to take with us. So if we do an upgrade or an update, it's something that we could, outside the kitchen, the kitchens, but appliances that are in there, we could take with us. Windows, if they're in good condition, could be reused somewhere else. So there's things that have happened at the FAF that if and when something better happens for us, it's things that we could salvage or reuse in some other aspect. We have talked to our consultants about coming up with an idea of using the FAF Center current site. If we demoed the FAF Center, could we rebuild something on the current site as it stands? Part of the issue is parking. You know, we don't have enough parking at the FAF Center alone to be able to do something. We still run activities and programs at the, during the school day. So we can't count on the school parking lot between us and Dale Street for sufficient parking. So on the site, I probably have 24 spots at the FAF Center, maybe. So it's, anything that we would do there, some sort of parking would have to come into play if we were, if that was a viable option. One thing I should mention as well, as part of my update, we are in discussions, Rob Tate or one of our commissioners, myself have looked at the possibility of putting up a disc golf course over at McCarthy Park. We're in the very preliminary discussions of it, but we have talked about it at a couple of the Park and Rec meetings. It'll be on our agenda this coming week, next week. But something that we're looking to pursue as another recreational activity for people of all ages, but especially adults that don't have anything. It's a, one that doesn't need us to be out there. You can go to the course, if you want to play four holes, play four holes. If you want to play 18, play 18 or how many we're able to put out there. So something that we're, we're in the preliminary discussions about and something we're looking forward to hopefully be able to do for the community.
Who'd you say, McCarthy Park?
McCarthy Park, yeah, like using that land, not, don't want to get baseball and softball and Little League and lacrosse mad at me if they're watching, we're not taking away any fields, we're not, not going to be going over playing field, not going to be playing baseball and a kid throwing a pitch and a disc come flying by. So looking at the, if you look at the perimeter of McCarthy Park, it's kind of the outposts of McCarthy Park.
Like what they did at the high school?
At the middle school, yeah.
Middle school. High school back in my day, sorry.
Yeah, something similar, but not buried in the woods. So if you still think of the perimeter, beyond the softball fence of one of the softball fields, things like that, that we're trying to be creative with where we can put things where it doesn't disrupt the normal flow of traffic for sports activities and everything else we have going on there, but would still be a destination for people in the community and potential revenue generator outside that, so. Yeah. Great, cool.
So Kevin, I was fascinated to hear you say that you could basically double the size of the camp given your demand, but the factors that don't let you are the amount of staff and the amount of space. If you could solve those two problems, you could double your program.
Could just about double the camp, just about double the camp. So if we had more space and we're very thankful to the school committee, Dr. Marsden for, and Mr. Grendam at Dale Street for allowing us to use Dale Street School during the summer. It's been going on about eight or 10 years that they've allowed us access to the school on a daily basis. It used to be in case of rain, we were able to finagle something to get in there, but Dr. Marsden and the school committee have been great about granting us access to the school for those eight weeks of camp. And that allowed us to expand our program at the time to basically house one of our camps there, one of our camps with me at the FAF Center. So that allowed that expansion and we're at that point now where if there was more space available and we were able to hire more staff, we'd be able to have even a bigger camp. So the two to 250 kids we're having per week, double might be tough, but we'd probably be at about 350 or so, 325 if we had more space and more staff, so absolutely.
Well, I hope you can figure that out. That would be great to have more kids going to camp.
Lot of kids that are, a lot of families and a lot of kids interested in camps, which we're very thankful for.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about, about traffic. So Trinity just finished their due diligence on the traffic study on Hospital Road and everything else, and I was wondering what the summertime traffic looks like as opposed to what the traffic might have looked like when Trinity did their due diligence and whether there would be, you know, a fairly hefty number of cars or whatever that weren't covered in there.
I mean, I'd probably have more.
I don't know enough about, you know, the schedules in McCarthy.
Right, I think you probably have more cars when school is in session than drop offs.
So they probably would have caught that then.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you'd have a lot more drop offs. Yeah.
Well, again, I just, you know, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, our traffic up to McCarthy Park, I would say is definitely the highest on Saturdays, for sure, using that road. But higher in the spring and fall than it is in the summer.
Okay. Take advantage of the opportunity to ask the question.
Laurel, you gotta use Bill's dedicated microphone.
Laurel Scotty, I just have a question about McCarthy Park. I know we're always looking, well, the kids are always looking for particularly baseball, you know, room, places to play. Is there any reason why we don't have lights at McCarthy Field so we could have night games like we do down at Mete Comet? I mean, it seems silly.
The easy answer is that there's no funds to do that. So it's, it would be an expensive proposition to put lights up at McCarthy because there's very limited access to electricity as is. We don't have much electricity outside the building that we have to house our equipment. So that's one. Two, I would assume, and I don't want to speak for them, but the neighborhood around there probably wouldn't want the lights on, especially the new development that just got built beyond one of our fields. Probably wouldn't want those lights on, you know, at night since there haven't been lights before. So there hasn't been a lot of, a lot of people interested or contacting me about putting up lights here and there, but never enough interest for us to dive deeper into that topic.
Okay, something we could stretch for.
Well, it's a good, actually, it's a very interesting comment because as you said, there is an electricity, but if we, on June 21st, are lucky enough to get more and get support of the project up there with infrastructure going up there, it'd be awesome to then say, you know, can we, because from a light, I mean, I live in Mete Comet and when there's a football game on a Friday night, a lacrosse game, it's not that bad. And so there's nothing that close as there is to, their homes right at the corner of the entrance to the high school and it doesn't, I don't think it really creates too much havoc.
The noise, the light noise is not anywhere where it was 10, 10 years ago. And they can make, you know, we've looked at light projects, as we've, we've looked at replacing the lights at the Mete Comet tennis courts and at the baseball field there. And going through the process of talking to vendors, the way that they position the lights now, if you lived on the corner, you wouldn't know that the lights, light's not going to be shining in your, you know, your front window or anything like that. So the way they have the lights now is they literally shine down on the field versus the way they were built in the 80s and 90s where they projected out. You know, now it's, it's shining down. So it's definitely a better concept and a better way of doing that. Still extremely expensive to do for a project.
Have you gotten any requests, I'm curious, for pickleball courts?
Here and there, but.
I know Kingsbury is just packed, so that's why I'm curious, there's so many members, I'm wondering if people are asking in town if there's any modifications.
Every once in a while we get someone, Laurel's asked me before about it. I think that's.
I was like, I think somebody in the audience. She did not ask me to ask.
We've had people contact us. The unfortunate part, or the fortunate part, our tennis courts are used five, six days a week by our program, which is going on right now. And I keep looking at the weather to see if the rain's gonna hit and we're about 45 minutes away from finishing our spring session. But the high school tennis teams use it throughout the spring. So they're, outside Tuesday, they're on every other day that they can be on the court. So the availability of courts during those high volume times is zero because of the amount of use that we have on them. So we've never seriously explored it because we are the host for the high school tennis team. So they need those four courts in a certain, certain configuration to be able to host or be able to play their league matches.
But nothing prevents a resident, if they have the markers, to go to a tennis court when there's nothing going on and use it.
Zero issue with that. Yeah, if you can buy them on Amazon, they're pretty cheap to buy to, just to drop those down, but we don't want anyone coming and putting like tape down on the court or trying to do something themselves because the court itself, if you put tape down and we try to pull it up, it's gonna ruin the court. It's gonna rip up the surface right there. So it's something we'd love to, again, lights at McCarthy, lights at Mete Comet, pickleball courts, disc golf course. I mean, there's a lot of things that are on the want list, but there's only so many dollars to go around to figure out those. So I would love to have this, I'd love to have pickleball courts and there's a bunch of communities, I believe Franklin is one that just redid, I want to say a street hockey court or an outdoor basketball court that they just redid into a pickleball court. I think Westwood has pickleball courts. So they are not in town and I hate telling people to go outside Metfield, but there are a couple just outside the borders that do have pickleball courts if people are really interested. Wellesley just installed some.
Medway does.
Medway does. So there are, you know, around 109 and 27 in our communities that have it. So I'd love to be able to get them in, but I don't think Mete Comet would be the right spot right now unless we were able to do a renovation slash addition over there to add on those courts.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank, that's it. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope you have a good summer.
You too.
I'll see you in the fall.
Let's see, next item on the agenda, Bay Colony Rail Trail Association to discuss rail trail project status and request approval of one contract, I believe, right? Just one, not two?
Right, one, yes. We have taken the other one off.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
And who is?
I think Kristen's here and it's James.
Or do you want to?
Yep, and James Goldstein is on as well.
You got to have a mic.
Yes, hold on just one second, I'm trying to turn on my camera. Okay. Hello. Um. Rose.
You might be claiming.
He's just faking.
James, it might be helpful if you actually turn your video off.
I'm sorry.
Why don't you try to turn your video off and just speak to us? Sometimes that will improve your internet connection.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm doing that now, okay. Anyway. So I was saying that we.
He only cuts out when he gets to the important stuff.
Installation Thursday, weather permitting. I'm sorry, am I still cutting out?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Perhaps it's better that I don't continue. It's up to you. If I'm cutting out that much, I apologize.
It's amazing how consistently you come through when you're not actually trying to tell us anything. Try, keep, keep trying, James. Let's give it another shot.
Okay, I'll give it one more apologies. So as I was saying, I don't know if you heard this, the stone dust installation we plan to start on Thursday and the contract you have before you is for that. It's for MJ Tuttle Excavating, which is a company that has excellent experience in this area. They did the Holliston Rail Trail and I believe a couple of others and are very well suited for the job and they were the low bidder as well, which we were very thankful of now because they're a very good company. Just to give you an update on a couple of other issues, they'll be very brief, I know this is not on your agenda. We have ordered the flashing beacon warning signs for both Marting and Farm Street. We're waiting to hear exactly when they're going to be delivered and installed, but we hope within a few weeks. And then the trail will basically be complete. There is signage and a few other amenities that it will need, except for the fencing. And we have fencing bids in and we're in the process of seeing what we can afford and then recommending a fencing contractor for a contract. We are likely to do the fencing in two stages because of the limited funding now, but we can get a good deal of it done upfront in the next few weeks. And then through fundraising and other efforts, we hope to be able to get additional fencing sometime down the road.
And James, that fencing?
More than what's on your agenda, I know, and I may still be cutting out. So the issue we are looking for is approval of the MJ Tuttle Excavating contract this evening.
James, just one quick comment. The fencing you're talking about, is this in response to a butters that are complaining or is it different fencing?
It is both. The main butter fencing is for, it's adjacent to the Swedeen property and I think they've contacted the board in the past and we've had a number of conversations with them. And that part of the fencing is truly privacy fencing. It'll be approximately eight feet tall. It's gonna be stockade fencing and the Swedens have agreed to pay half of that cost. I believe it's roughly $14,000 total. They're gonna pay roughly seven, I'm rounding. The main derivative fencing is along the tread of, it's post and rail, well, not exactly post and rail, but close to post and rail fencing. I think it's called twin timber fencing. And that is where there is some steepness near the trail just to prevent, you know, folks from, if they did fall off or something, it would be a safety measure.
Thanks. Anything, anything further or we just need to approve the contract?
Just approve. Nothing further from me. I have nothing else, I have other questions.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, we have a, the contract is for, just get the name right, I know it's Tuttle, but it's MJ Tuttle Excavating from Holliston. Total value of the contract is $3,600.
A day.
Is that a day, that's a day rate?
Yeah, it's a day rate for three days worth of work. So it's like just shy of 11 grand. Do I have that right?
Why do I?
You know what, I didn't, I saw that, but then I went back to the contract and they said that's a day.
It's a proposal attached to the contract.
Okay, okay, so that proposal is proposing just a day rate.
But it's three days.
That's correct. And we have worked out that they will do this for three days.
Okay.
Ultimately, the contract will be, I don't have it in front of me, but three times 3,600.
10,800, yeah, okay. Okay.
I guess it's 10,800, I guess.
Yep.
The only thing I found quirky is that it's a three day contract, but you have a 30 day like termination clause. It's quirky, but.
Or if there's some issue about access, you know, but if you want to shorten it, it's not a huge deal for us, although we wanted that these contracts period.
I, and they, they said that's a day.
It's a proposal attached to the contract.
Okay, okay, so that proposal is proposing just a day rate?
But it's three days.
That's correct and, and we have worked out that they will do this for three days.
Okay.
Ultimately, the contract will be, I don't have it in front of me, but three times thirty-six hundred.
Ten, ten thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I guess it's ten eight, I guess.
Yep.
The only thing I found quirky is that it's a three-day contract, but you have a thirty-day, like, termination clause, it's quirky, but.
Or if there's some issue about access, you know, but if, if you wanna shorten it, it's not a huge deal for us, although we wanted that these contracts period for more than the expected three days of work.
Right.
But it, it could be shortened. That June thirtieth date is the date that the, the grant ends, and all has to certainly be done by then, we were actually uncertain about the existing, about the initial start date and it was gonna be a couple of days earlier, but it's now gonna be starting on Thursday, weather permitting.
So, there's no way they could end up delaying this any way, shape, or form for you, that you're a hundred percent confident they can get this done before your cutoff date?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. So, just for your information, Nick actually prepared this contract with my review, so.
Yeah, okay, so you have reviewed it. The, the only thing that's weird about the contract is nowhere that actually calls out the to, I mean, I, now that I've done the math, I see how it says it, but it's just probably the first contract I've ever seen that doesn't actually tell you what the total cost of the contract is.
Well, here's, so I caught the same thing, but here's, when you read the part, first top, part of it, it talks about, this is the rate and then it's C, Exhibit A for, for the breakdown, so you actually, you, it does call it out at one point that it's, it's, it's thirty-six thousand dollars a day, which is what they have.
Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred, excuse me, for, for their bid for a day and then when they talk about it being the eight-hour rate, three days, it is actually in there, believe it or not, I, I read through again this afternoon and I'm like, oh, okay, now I understand how they're doing this.
You're saying there's a place in here that says ten thousand eight hundred?
No, it doesn't say that, it just says by three days.
That's my point, no, 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 I saw that, when it says the, the cost or pay, cost of the work, it says thirty-six hundred a day and we've agreed it'll be three days. My only observation is usually when you let a contract, they're assuming it's.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's fine, I just, it's an observation, it's not a.
I'm with you.
It's not a disqualification, so, if there's no more conversation, I'll entertain a motion.
So, James, your, your connection worked in the end, so thank you for keeping going and my only question had to do with the, I know that some of your funds were, had to be spent by a certain time and you're saying that they are gonna be spent.
Exactly, um, June thirtieth is that date and this will be part of that, the flashing beacons will be part of that, payment to DPW for their overtime work is, is part of it and yes, we'll meet that hundred thousand dollar second grant expenditure.
All right, thank you. So, I would move that we approve the contract with MJ Tuttle Excavating for Stone Dust Installation is outlined in the materials.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, James, thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
I drive by that routinely, it's hard for me to know it's not even done yet because it's looking really good, so, and I can tell that.
We better this weekend.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Do I have to announce this next one loudly so that it makes it into the?
I'm broke.
All right. Yeah, we really need the drum roll.
Okay, I can work on that.
So, item number four, Town Moderator Scott McDermott to discuss the special town meeting and special town meeting quorum, welcome Scott.
I thought you'd be spending one time on the rail trip.
And I think we have one specific item that I think after the discussion will go down, which is to reduce the quorum, but I think we'll, we'll start with just the discussion with moderator about the upcoming special town meeting.
And you need the microphone if you're gonna sit there.
Stand or sit.
Would you like to start?
Yeah, so, I don't have, I don't have any presentation to do, we are two weeks from tonight, prepared, I, you know, I think it's gonna be very important to be very active in promoting this from all of those people who are proponents and, and anybody that is opposed to get our voters here. You know, we know it's kind of the end of the seasonal window that we're, you know, we're holding the meetings, so it's gonna be, I think, really important to, we've looked at, I was just down with Marion, looking at kind of historical turnout numbers and, you know, and so forth and so, I think to me that that's gonna be important, it bears on the discussion around, you know, on the quorum, hopefully, you know, it, it makes that really irrelevant from a, from a practical perspective in terms of the way that it is effectuated, I, if it is reduced, I'd hate to have this major decision be made by any number under two-hundred-and-fifty or between whatever quorum is set in two-fifty, but, you know, we'll go to that question. In terms of logistics, Christine and I have talked a number of times about logistics, the engagement of Thistle again, who was the, you know, was the excellent AV communications company that we engaged for last November, they provided us, I think, a lot of features that are, are, you know, are good and necessary, one of the things that we would like to do is to have an indoor and an outdoor option, still get lots of questions about that considering now the time of year, that option becomes more available to us than it would've, you know, at other times and so I think it's, I think that that's something that we, that we do wanna do, we'd like to provide accommodations for a thousand people in terms of being able to, to just to know what we could be prepared for. We had nine-hundred-and-fifty-five people when we did the rezoning in, in two thousand and eighteen and the number when we did the purchase, I'm not sure of, but I know, I know we had a special town meeting in March tenth of two thousand and fourteen, I think it was six-hundred-and-seventy-five people at, at that time, but I'd have to confirm that. So, we've talked about, you know, significant numbers of people who have been involved in this, in this process, it would be kind of paradoxical, you know, many people in this room, certainly Bill, you know, this story, you know, has been coming down the freight track, you know, the freight train track towards us and, and to now have it come and for us to have to fight for a quorum, I think would be unfortunate. So, I, I think it's, you know, now kind of manifest on, you know, on everybody, I was just talking to Kevin and, you know, people that have mailing lists and to get people tuned into the fact that, you know, that this issue is now right here, there's certainly plenty of information, I've spent the last couple of days, I mean, there's great information that has been provided that's online, so, I don't know if the QR code idea will, is, is gonna take shape, but people getting a, you know, some kind of a, a way, everybody in town to be able to access the information that exists online, I was just watching last night's warrant committee, you know, hearing and, you know, there was another good detailed presentation, if you look at that and the slides, you'd have a very good idea of what to expect at town meeting in terms of, you know, what you would be considering. Other logistics, I think we will go back and, and use the same system for voting since we only have the two articles, we can take a voice vote on the first one, Christine informed me today, I thought it required two-thirds, but it only requires a, a simple majority, I guess, the, the other article.
Multi-family housing, so the rule change on Avenue T, it's a multi-family.
Yeah, so that makes it, that makes it easier to be able to do a voice vote and to be able to do a, you know, the kind of the ma, the modified ballot that we did last time and, you know, at a smaller number, it'll be easier to count considering our new technology, you know, that we have in, in the town clerk's office, in fact, it'll be easier to check people in, you know, as well into the meeting because of, of that technology, so, what else?
It allows us to have two check-in points, so last year for the special town meeting, we had a centralized check-in spot inside the municipal area, now we'll have one outside to be able to check in, or inside, you'll have your choice.
And if I, if I followed correctly, so we would have, we'd be using the normal gym for the core.
Correct.
We have an outdoor area for anyone who would prefer to just stay outdoors for health reasons, for whatever reason.
Yep.
We have a cafeteria for seniors who just would like to not be mixed up with a group of people in general, but we again would like to have be, have the ability to socially distance and, and not go too far in.
And the library.
And the library, that's right, too, I knew there was a fourth one.
The library was a seniors for what I call Woodstock and then.
Okay, well, we didn't talk about that, but we can, yeah.
It's a little more comfortable.
Okay. The other thing, I point out, this meeting starts at six PM.
Does.
So, not our normal seven and again, that's partly given if we're outside, I would hope this isn't a four-hour meeting, Scott, but if it ever was, it would be better for us to start at six.
Yeah, no, I don't, certainly don't envision that and that's another reason for us to, to, you know, encourage the education and, and, you know, in looking at the material last night, that, that, you know, we're looking for the, what do they say, the, the simplicity on the far side of the complexity, you know, we've had the, the complexity as a situation has been unrolled and addressed, but when you get down to it, the presentation, for instance, at the ward committee last night or others that I've seen, that I've gone to, it's, it's, I don't think it's that complex, at the end of the day, it's kind of a yes or no decision for the town to make and.
Although I'd point out two, two things, there's two articles, the, the first one, which is the disposition article, it's slightly complex only because it has a clause in there, besides authorizing the disposition, there's also a clause authorizing the sewer extension and I'm, I'm doing this in case people are listening.
Yeah.
So, the reason the sewer extension is in there is because the hospital originally had its own sewage system, so there was never a point in time when the hospital property was connected to the town sewer system, but we're now intending to connect it and Christine, I believe there's a rule that says if you need to put more than five-hundred feet on a sewer extension, it requires a vote, so.
Bylaw, it's a town bylaw.
It's a bylaw, so, so basically those, those are bundled into a single article because it would only make sense to have this, you need the sewer extension if you're gonna approve the disposition and you would only need the sewer extension if you've approved the disposition, so. And then the second article, which is the zoning article, for those who are wondering, in the original hospital master plan, building thirteen, which is known as the R Building, which is the building all the way to the north of the campus, actually extends onto the north field, which is the area that was identified as nothing to be developed, the thought of the master planning committee when they put this together is that we would, that no one would want to rehabilitate or otherwise use building thirteen, Trinity does want to use that, so in order to do that, the zoning change, we're talking about doesn't change, if I follow this right, doesn't change the official designation of the north field as everyone understands it, but does call out a certain segment of the north field that the, basically building thirteen is on along with some surrounding areas, so you'd have room for parking lots and that second article is to change that zoning, so for that piece of the north field alone, Trinity will be able to rehabilitate building thirteen and, and set it up for people to live in.
So, does that mean if Article One were not to pass, you wouldn't, you wouldn't pass, you wouldn't even take up Article Two or?
I, no, no.
I, yeah.
No reason to rezone.
Unless, unless you are contemplating.
I don't know what the planning board discussion was last night, I haven't had a chance to talk to Sarah, so I would need to talk to Sarah on the planning board before we made that decision.
Yeah.
He's basically passed it. It wasn't a big discussion.
Might be more likely that you would still do it, but if people turned down Article One, they probably turned down Article Two, what I'm thinking, Mark, is to the extent that we know one, if we, if we were to pursue some further, you know, some alternative development, now that we know developers might have an interest there, it might make sense to leave that as an option, so if, if for some weird reason voters wanted to change the zoning but didn't want to approve the project.
The only consideration would be if it, if the worst-case scenario, they both fail, the zoning article cannot be brought up for two years unless the planning board has a positive recommendation.
Okay, so, you know, my thinking had been without knowing the, knowing there were two articles, but not knowing actually the order that we would do the, the, the article that could be done by a voice vote first so that the one that we, we need to.
Moderator, you can add the.
As long as we don't have any interdependence around what we were just talking about, because the idea would be that if people were to fill in their ballots, that they could, they could leave and go home and, you know, while the ballots would be counted like we allowed people to, to be able to do, so.
And just about Marion will be texting me for like not ballots, vote cards.
Oh, yes, our vote cards.
Our vote cards.
And I totally agree with that sentiment.
Scott, you were talking about the possibility of doing the second article first?
The second article first.
Yeah.
People can leave after the first.
I, I, I'm not sure I would do it that way because the second article is not the main purpose of the meeting and we're gonna get people off on a, like, that only matters if the first article passes.
I didn't think there was, maybe there is gonna be opposition, I, I, I had kind of been led to believe that it was gonna be a, a relatively quick.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a technical correction on the zoning, I think the issue is if we do the vote first, you're going to have people waiting around for a significant period of time for us to be able to count those vote cards in order to know before they take action on the second, we were trying to accommodate similar to what we did in the fall where people wanted to have the flexibility to.
I mean, how long, how long does, how long is the count? This is a hand count, are we talking about a manual count?
We have to.
Do people going up and, and putting their card in the boxes?
They have to be physically counted, yeah.
Yeah. See, I had, again, the, the expression that it was a technical kind of a thing, it seemed to me it was like one of those articles that we would, we would anyway want to.
I'm not, well.
If they're not interdependent in the way that I'm hearing now and I need to go back and look at the articles, I guess, a little bit deeper, if not independent, I'd rather get the one out of the way quickly that was a technical issue that required only a voice vote and then concentrate on the feature film.
I'm, I'm switching into voter mode here other than selectman mode, I'm sitting there saying, well, if you asked me to change zoning without me knowing that the reason I'm changing zoning is the article, is the project, I'm not sure that I'm willing to just change zoning in the blind because it's kind of like, well, I don't know what that's all about, hey, just think about it, I mean, maybe you're right, but.
Easy explanation which you made a few minutes ago, which is basically that when we set up the zoning initially, we, we didn't, we were not aware, didn't focus on the fact that this building actually impinges into what is limited to open space and therefore we just need to readjust it.
So, what happens if the second one is voted on first and it's voted down?
If you need building thirteen, it doesn't mean the whole, it doesn't mean the whole project is jeopardy whatsoever.
Well, it's forty units and you've built them all.
Yeah, but.
I don't know.
I think you're doing it backwards.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Bill, I, I understand the, the logistics, but it's only two articles.
The problem with logistics for the, for the disposition article is that you need two-thirds and when we have multiple locations, that becomes an issue.
Okay, so we need two-thirds disposition.
For the disposition, not the zoning.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's why we wanted to use a vote card, you know, because of the multiple locations and the two-thirds requirement and you have a recorded, at the end of the day, you have a, a recorded record that.
It's only the zoning that doesn't mean two-thirds?
Correct.
Right. I, I think you gotta get that big one out of the way first.
That's kind of where, I, I mean, I defer to the moderator here, but I would be, I personally, I would agree with you, Bill.
And then just keep people around.
That's the reason people are showing up.
The people that are, who, who are, who remain afterwards, they would address the, the other article, is that the, kind of the premise?
That's how I would, I mean, the important reason.
You risk losing quorum.
I would think that the people who think it's important enough to figure out whether it approved, whether it was approved would stick around to find out, but, I mean, but I don't know if it's a two-hour, if you're saying it's a two-hour vote count, then I get it.
No, it's not a two-hour vote count, but we could go back and measure what it was when we did it in, in November, but.
If we had four-hundred, it's four-hundred ballots, if we had nine-hundred, it's nine-hundred, but then depending on how many people are doing the counting, it's not that impossible to, to break things, I, I.
You have to take the ballot, yeah, you close it, when it, first of all, it's not just, it's not just how long, you have people who wait in line, come up, they have their bracelets taken off, this is what we did, this was the procedure, they had their bracelets cut off, they voted, then when everybody in a, in a venue had voted, those boxes were taken to a designated room and then they were counted, they were hand-counted and they were verified and, and then Marion brought the.
Hey, can you?
Make an announcement at the, at the, at the end of the first vote, assuming you're believing the project first and make an announcement that please stay afterwards because. Oh, I certainly would do that.
Yeah.
Just doesn't mean they will.
You have to. If you ought to score it, I mean.
Do you have to wait until the count is done to move to the second article?
Only for the reasons that you were identifying that if, earlier, if that, I mean, if, that people would wanna know.
I would, I would agree legally you don't, but in terms of these other considerations and what's going through people's minds. and what's going through people's minds, maybe they, they want to know the outcome before they're willing to vote the second one.
Mm-hmm. Well, so there'd be.
But you could use that time to have the discussion about it while the votes are being counted, and then not just have the vote.
Sure. Yeah, we're going to go on, and we're going to have the discussion, and then when the vote, when we get back.
Maybe there is no big controversy in that he has a sense of that.
We're going to have microphones, so I think we're going to start to see the fill of the crowd. If there's a long line, then, and it's against, then there's this discussion we had. If we sense that the town sees what we're doing and they're in support of it, I think we could potentially go right to the next one. So I think that's going to be your call. You're going to be able to see if you can read the crowd.
It's your call, Scott.
Yeah, we could do, I mean, you know, I mean, the ballot was actually in lieu of a standing count in multiple locations, not in lieu necessarily of a voice vote that was so obviously two-thirds that it could be recognized. But the problem there is that I have to have that judgment be made by, other than the moderator in other venues, which is not something that I, I think you can do, right? So, let's talk.
We get a good turnout, right? And that's, that's our.
I'm going to be back next week, so by next week, you know, we'll have this blueprint, I think.
The other point that I'd make, just as part of this overall flow, is there's another information session at the Public Safety Building this coming Thursday, 7:00. So that'll be sort of a, similar to the one that was done at COA, so that's another opportunity for people to find out about the project. And then there's, Trinity is holding office hours from.
Saturday before.
The Saturday before, which is the 18th of June, from 9:00 to 11:00 here, right here in the Channery Room. So for people who want to literally drop in Saturday morning to have nearly a one-on-one as opposed to a large group, that's yet another opportunity for, for people to actually talk to Trinity directly. So, Laurel?
Is this going to be a card vote or a vote card?
If you're, so there'll be two separate cards, correct?
Same as it was in the fall.
Well, we only had one vote in the fall, right? We decided yes or no.
Separate cards.
Yeah.
I was in California for the last one, so I wasn't here for that.
So you, we just went up and gave a yes or a no.
Right.
And it was, that was it. So now we've got two votes.
We're only going to do.
Only kind of one.
By the card. Oh, good. Okay.
So if.
We decided on the thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If, if we're doing a vote card, and you can vote and leave, I think you'll have a much greater turnout, particularly by the younger population, than if it's having to hang around to see, to vote for the second one. And I think the first vote, the disposition, is the most important one. And I, I.
So would you do the second, you would do Article Two first, then?
No, no, the disposition is the, is Article One. I would do Article One first.
Okay.
Because you're going to get the younger people who have kids, if there's games, there's whatever else is going on.
That's the one that we're going to be doing the card.
Right, and then they.
Trinity's not going to stop if they don't get the second vote for some reason that doesn't happen.
We can, I, I think the idea of being able to, after people have voted, to return, and there would be a discussion on the, on the second article, at that point, you know, expedites enough. Although I agree with your point, that was, that was the design of the meeting that we did in November, was to allow people, under all circumstances, to be able to, to leave. And, but we didn't have a quorum to maintain, just to make the announcement. If we have a quorum to maintain and people do leave, then you run into that, although I guess that turns our conversation to the question of the quorum.
Right. That's actually a valid point.
So we, we have on the table to talk about reducing the 250 quorum that we normally have, down to whatever we would like to reduce it down to. When we were in the middle of the COVID lockdowns, we reduced it to 10%, which ironically, we dropped the quorum to 25, and we wound up with, what, 400?
Just to 400 people.
So there's a, there's sort of a perverse thought process here that says, you want a good turnout. You have people who worry that the quorum's not going to protect them, but I'm not suggesting that, but.
First time we reduced the quorum, for the first one, we only had 140, we had less than the 250 people.
Okay.
On the, on the football field.
The first one on the football field.
Yeah, that was pretty sparse, yeah.
And, you know, the interesting thing about quorum is, you know, I don't know what medways are, but I did some research, you know, you've got towns that have zero, like Bellingham and Groton, and you have towns that, Westwood has 175, a lot of towns with 150. I asked Marion, but I'm going to be in touch with Richard. I'm interested historically how ours came to be 250, because just in the kind of the, as I went online and bounced around today and looked at Abington, Bedford, Whalen, and so forth, I mean, 250 is the largest of the.
Medway's a, Medway's 100 if it's zoning, otherwise it's 50, and 100 to the annual.
Hopkinton is 1% of their registered voters, so that was the only one I checked out.
And our, our quorum requirement is a bylaw. The charter refers to it, that it should be reviewed periodically, but it, the quorum can be changed with a simple bylaw change.
I guess the point is that people use big quorums and small quorums as the reason for driving people to come to town meeting. You know, the, you know, the theory on the small quorum is that people will come so that a very small majority are able to control the town's business. And on the big quorum, it's that you have to get a certain number of people to undertake the town's business.
The, I think the meetings that we've had so far that involve the state hospital have all gotten good turnouts. So this is, this is an issue that's of interest to the town, and in some ways, the quorum might not be important. On the other hand, it would be a shame to have what happened to us, what happened in the first annual town meeting, that you would also think would be important to people, so.
It'd be a shame, and, and we have more expense associated this time. We should be more prepared from a production point, and not, more prepared than the past, but we need to be more prepared from a production point, just like we did in November, you know, to make, to make sure, so.
So, so just to start the bidding here, I said, cut it in half. 250, drop it to 125.
I'm actually okay with that. I mean, and what's sad is, we wouldn't even be having this conversation if we didn't experience what we just experienced at the annual town meeting. And that shows that we, you know, I kid when we call it Woodstock, right, with that, that meeting we had at the high school where there were swarms of people outside, right, and all they wanted to do is vote, God bless them. So, we know what it can be. So it blew my mind to think that we couldn't even get 225 people back in May. And then we did it a week later, and we got to, what, we say today, 312?
312.
Somewhere around there. So there's a significant concern that, yes, there's a lot of people that are, that are eager to talk about the state hospital, but also look at, there's a lot of new people in town that really don't know what's going on, and I, I'm concerned that they don't really understand the importance and the relevance of, this vote is so important. It's so important. And, you know, we're not being cynical, we're not trying to do anything shady, but we, you know, the three of us that have to run this town, we know that there's an offer on the table that is very, very, very good. And if we are trying to be true to the, to the plan that the citizens ask us to follow, and we knew we couldn't hit every bullet, right, but the one thing that we heard, and if Eileen Murphy is speaking incorrectly, jump on, on email tomorrow, whatever, let me know, but keeping those buildings, we heard over and over, and making sure we maintain open space so people can still go up there, what we're doing is getting those buildings to be renovated, to look fantastic, to have roadways, so that, like I tell people today, you can walk down Metacomic. You can't walk in my house, but you can walk in front of my house, no problem. That is the intent of this project, to let people walk around up there, respect the property. It'll be cleaned up, it'll look beautiful, but it's driving so much community. I mean, the, the cultural alliance, they, it's so vital that this happens, if we want to see all of the hard work that they've put in, to have the chapel renovated, to continue with all the, 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 the community efforts, like what they're doing this Saturday. So it's just, it's vital. And so lowering the quorum to make sure that we can act in the best interest of the town, I hope we get 400, 900,000 people. That's, we pray for that. But we saw unfortunately what can happen.
Well, I would say, to me, it's, you know, I mean, politics is not a dirty word. You know, politics can also be the art of the possible. And there's a political question, you know, about getting people to come, you know, to get out your vote. I mean, that's a, you know, is, is a kind of a part of the, the process, of people that feel strongly in the way that you just expressed, you know, and who have access and will encourage people to, to do that. You know, I think that, that to have proponents speak in that way is, you know, is very important and profound. And, you know, and to be able to hear, you know, people on each side, it's all about, to me, it's always been about the, the discussion, the deliberation, the debate, and then the vote, right? So that's what makes town meeting great. But also getting the, you know, the folks there.
It may be more important in this case for the second vote, if you're losing people, that you get more of a caution before you quote-unquote lose a quorum.
Exactly. Exactly.
Laurel? There's a microphone there somewhere.
Personally, I think we're heading down a slippery slope to change the amount of the quorum, to get a vote that you want on a specific project. I just find a slippery slope to go down. If we, it's, please. So it's 250 people. I think it's pretty sad that 250 people can determine what's happening for a town of 12,000. But to go less than that in order to accomplish what you want, and make this kind of a decision, say, basic on 125 people, I just think it's a slippery slope that you just don't change it for a particular vote. It's either done at one time and a general consensus of the town versus, oh, we have to get this passed. I, that just doesn't sit well with me. And I'm, I'm not against the program. I'm not saying that. I'm against the principle of changing the vote to accomplish a, a particular vote. I, I.
I don't think it's to accomplish a particular vote, though, Laurel. It's to get a vote.
Yeah, exactly.
But this is for one particular project.
Right.
We're talking about just one particular project, and that's what I.
This is a huge, a hu.
I understand it, so you're, so you're willing to lower the vote for a huge project. I.
But concerns me, I don't know if people will show up. I mean, we, we had an annual town meeting that if people understand how the town works, we can't pass a budget. We can't move the town forward to the next fiscal year unless the citizens come in and approve things, which I love. But, but the fact that we couldn't get 250 people for what should be considered really important, now if we lower the number, and the citizen's like, whoa, 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 well, then come out. That's all we're trying to do, is get people. But we still need to, understanding the partner that we have, understanding the time constraints that we have, that we've, and we've been saying all along, that our partner needs to move by a certain date to continue on. So I don't feel like we are pushing anybody other than come and vote. And if you don't want the project, I'm 100% okay with that, but come and vote. But those people that have been paying attention and are going to come, I hope there's 900 of them. But if it turns out it's only 175, well, that's kind of sad, right? Because it is an important vote.
Yes, but isn't that also the silent majority? I, you know, a lot of people don't come. I think we have to wonder why they don't come to vote, too. I mean, I think there's a whole, I, I just think changing the quorum is a big deal, and I think that it, I don't think it should be done for a special, a special town meeting that's only voting on one particular item. Essentially, that's what this is about. And that's just my opinion.
Yeah. No, I appreciate your thoughts, and our, and I would agree with Eileen, that we're not doing it because we hope nobody will show up and a smaller people can control the decision. We're actually doing it because we've already seen the town. You're right, I'd love to know why. And, and there's lots of reasons why. And the reasons I hear this opinion is that the sense of civic duty that people have had in the past is not so strong today, is the short answer that I hear. And that, I don't, let's not get into debate about that. It's editorial.
Oh, no, no.
But here, but the one point I really wanted to make is the consequences of holding this vote and not having a quorum is a decision. It's a decision because we're not going to have another meeting between now and the fall, and there's no, we don't know it's possible. We don't know that the developer is going to hang around to say, no, you just take as long as you want, and I'll eventually get to it, because that's risk. The longer this gets delayed, this risk for the developer. So, so basically, the thing I'm worried about is that if we don't get this thing figured out now, the consequences of that are that our decision gets taken away by events. This doesn't go through, we don't go through another four-year master planning process and put out another RFP to see if we get better developers. If we don't get this to go through, I think you can, I'll let Gene Minio talk for sure, but I think CAM goes away. So then we have to sit there and just figure out as a practical matter what to do with a piece of land that has $25 million worth of, of contaminated buildings on it, that we are now holding, and we'll have to figure out what to do with it. Now, if, if people don't want to do it in June, then we got, we got the marching orders. But if we, if we wind up not doing it, because after eight years of effort, enough people weren't willing to come out for a couple of hours on the 21st of June, starting at 6:00 at night, I'm not really sure why anybody in this town wants to put any effort into these committees to do this kind of stuff. It's not worth it.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you on that one. I've been there.
So my, and so my real point was, what I'm worried about, given that we've already had an annual town meeting that failed to muster a quorum, I would not want this particular decision after eight years to be made by default because enough people didn't show up.
Right.
That's all.
So I'm coming down in sort of a between position. I hate changing the, like Laurel, I hate changing the quorum just for this particular vote. But I hear what you say about our quorum being higher than most other towns. So I, I'm not, whether the 250 is our quorum, I wouldn't mind changing the quorum to 125 all the time, I guess. I, it, it's just incomprehensible to me that we couldn't get a quorum at the annual town meeting, and so I, and I understand that it, it costs us a lot of money to put these things on, and it sounds like it's going to cost more because you're going to have more, more locations for people. So I guess I'm, my reluctance to change the, the quorum is, is, I guess, won over by the fact that I really don't care about what the quorum number is set at. I think it's, it's just a, a real shame that we can't get more people to show up and, and talk about the town's business. So maybe somehow we can figure out ways of doing it in the future that can include more people, which for me is, is some sort of.
There will be no more important decision. There will be no more important decision to be made in town than this particular decision.
Absolutely.
There has never been a decision made in town, perhaps maybe to build the first stockade here back in the 1600s, but there has never been one that will be more impactful to the town.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right.
And I'm not speaking whether for or against. I'm just saying, this is, this is totally.
Right.
You, this vote will impact irreparably.
Irrevocably.
Irrevoc, that's the word I wanted, yes. Excuse me, I apologize. That was the word I wanted. This, this will impact future generations. What happens here can never be changed.
Absolutely. Yep.
And if people are watching this meeting tonight and they don't show up to vote, however you vote, it's, it's the greatest negligence that you can perform, I think, you know, and, and the greatest hurt you can do for the town without voting. Now, I will make a comment about the quorum. The reduction to 25, which you're not, I understand, you're not considering that, but I'll make a comment on the reduction to 25. There were more committees involved, and there were more people sitting on the stage than 25 people. I know, because I've lost by the number of votes several times, of people sitting on the stage. So whatever number you pick, I would suggest you, you get as close to.
More people than will be sitting on the stage. That's reasonable.
I mean, I, well, it's, listen, this is true. It's, it's true. I lost my, my first, my first vote to try to get money to, to fight what D-CAM was going to do, and what they were going to leave in the river, essentially lost by the, the, the people sitting on the stage, lost by the, the selectmen. One selectman voted for it, I won't mention him, but he's still around. And, and every committee on the stage, the warrant committee, all voted against and everything else. We basically lost by something like 15 or 20 votes. All right? And fortunately, we got, did get the money that we needed to clean up the river. So we have a wonderful, wonderful overlook. We have something that's going to add to the attraction for the development. We still have some work to do on that. We still have some cleanup that they need to, to finish.
Yep.
And I'm working very hard on that. But again, I would, I would urge you to, to not get too drastic in a reduction of any quorum. I would also ask if you've had any comments or input from, from, from citizens.
Chris, Chris Potts had had a question back when Kevin was here, we were talking about the, the disc golf down at McCarthy Park, asking about lights, you know, that, or would we. Or we put the low ground clutter lights. And then, I think she said, much better, thanks. So, I think our conversation went in a better direction, and she was happier.
No, she was happier that I was talking into the microphone.
Oh.
It was a personal comment.
You know, I saw you adjusted. I was wondering.
So, Chris, back to your question about the lights around McCarthy Park. I think we would... If we had the money to do it, we would pick low ground clutter lights. But... So, there are no other comments or questions coming in. Bill, I think the important thing that you said was that this is like it's effectively irresponsible for people in this town to not recognize the significance of this decision. And if people will listen to you on that, this whole discussion about a quorum is irrelevant because that will not be the controlling factor in who votes. We'll have it.
You do have that one question.
Yeah, it just showed up. Yeah, it just showed up. Megan Glenn, Megan Glenn, why'd you choose June 21st for this meeting? Short answer is, it was a logical... We knew we needed to get it done pretty quick before people left on vacation, and we knew that we were going to need time to allow the due diligence process to carry itself out out through the mid to late May and get to an LDA. So, it was basically trying to balance those two things to do the date as late as was feasible to get all the work done, but early enough to not interfere with people's vacation plans. And many families have longstanding... It says, many people have longstanding plans. This is just a horrible time of year for people with young kids. I mean, I think what you're making the argument that let's put it off for another four months or something like that, and that enters into the business attractiveness for the developer. So, if you want to keep pushing things out, then we wind up changing the economics for the developer. This is what now the last day of school, so I'm not sure what people have plans for on the last day of school. It would be worse if we were doing it like the Tuesday after the Fourth of July weekend. Then I think that would really be a problem. So, it's a trade-off, Megan. We were trying to get it done at a time when the developer wants to get started on this because it's a year-long or longer permitting process. We didn't want to drag it out over the course of the summer, and so we tried to find the best trade-off between allowing as much time as we could to get to an LDA that everybody agreed to, but not so much time that all of a sudden we'd hear people saying, I'm gone for the... I've gone for the summer, and you held the meeting in the middle of the summer. There must have been a reason you did that. So, that's the short answer.
You should probably say what an LDA is.
Land disposition agreement. So, the... You all, if you've been following this, this is a... We have a proposal from Trinity. There is a more formal legal document that lays out the specific terms and conditions of the sale, includes performance guarantees. Some ways, it's a much drier document and less inspiring than the proposal, but it puts down the legal parameters by which we would transfer the land to Trinity, and they would carry out their proposal. And if they don't, then, you know, there'd be provisions for us to take the land back if we needed to. So, it's sort of like... It's the purchase and sales agreement.
And the question just asked, what's the timing for us to get that so the town can read it before we have the special town?
So, the... So, we... Unless you want to take a crack at it. You want me to do it, or...
Because it is our intent, so that we absolutely...
The target is next Monday, the 13th, so that the warrant committee can have it. So, that's what we hope. And there are still some specific issues that need to be resolved between the town and Trinity. I think in our estimate, those are not insurmountable. I'm learning more about working out, you know, real estate agreements because there are certain points of contention that kind of look like it's the gunfight at the OK Corral, but then everybody looks at each other and we see who blinks first. And so far, somebody blinks. And so, I think we have grounds to be optimistic that we can close on that this week. The target is the 13th. We'll let you know on the 13th whether we did it.
Yeah. The feedback we got today was good, based on our conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. It's all getting better, but we're not there yet.
Close.
Yep.
Very close.
Very.
Are there more questions?
Nope.
That's it? Megan, if you're still listening, I owe you an answer to your email. I had it half-written because it's a long answer. I haven't forgotten that I owe you that answer, and it's halfway there, and I will complete because you sent a thoughtful email some time back. I haven't forgotten. I just haven't had the time to get it all down. My apologies. Okay. I think I didn't hear disagreement with 125, but I'm...
Okay with it.
Are we okay? Are you okay with that, Pete?
Well, I really hate changing the quorum just for a special issue, but as I say, I'm not wedded to a particular quorum number, so I guess I'm willing to do it.
You have to make the motion.
I would move to change the quorum for the special town meeting to, I would say, 150.
Well, we were talking 125.
I know.
Based on... And I think your comment a few moments ago, Pete, made sense. Like, we happen to have one of the highest, if not the highest, for a town our size, and if we look at what other towns around us that are similar size, 125 made sense, right? So, it's half of...
So, well, so Pete, you... We're back to discussion, which is fine. Why did you pick 150 over 125?
It just seems more reasonable to me if we're going to... It's cutting the baby in a different way, I guess. I mean, if you're trying to get to a deal, I like 150 better than 125. That's all.
I'm not going to fall on my sword. I picked a number just that we're going to cut it in half because it was a simple concept. I have no problems with it being 150 if... I mean, I'm inter... I think it's important for us to cut it.
I don't have a... If we don't get 150, it speaks such volumes to...
Right.
The apathy that it's sadder than sad. And what you said earlier, Bill, like, this town will regret it if we can't at least get people to come out and voice it. If we don't vote because we don't get enough people...
Right.
I think one of the things that's helpful to look at, you're talking of roughly 9,800 registered voters. So, when you reduce the quorum to 150, it's 1.5% of registered voters were asking to turn out as a minimum to start the meeting.
Yeah.
And I just ordered 1,500 wrist bracelets today, so clearly I'm expecting a lot more than that. So... Right. And if you go to 125, you're at 1.2% of the registered voters. So, I don't think there's a huge difference. But even when you look at 250, we're still asking for less than 2% of our voters to come...
Which we know we can always get.
To redo this, which we just had a problem with. And honestly, I don't think we'd be having this discussion. Scott and I spent quite a bit of time on the phone today. I don't think we'd be having this discussion about the reduction in quorum...
Exactly.
If the May 2nd meeting didn't happen.
And the second one didn't... Wasn't an overpouring...
Right. It wasn't overwhelming either.
It's kind of scary that we...
The whole discussion...
Yeah, that's a separate discussion. Yep.
...started that about, you know, partially it has to do with your apathy and these other things. But it's also...
There's some communication issues. There's some things, I think, to look at around town meeting and its administr... I mean, there are things to be done in a, I guess, in a 21st century way, too, that need to be looked at. So, I want to just make sure that that gets balanced, although, you know, I'm as big a proponent as anyone here for people showing up and enjoying themselves and direct participatory democracy, and there's reasons to stand behind that, even if it doesn't have to do with what you're determining by particular vote. The other thing I think that's important, you know, as I kind of looked at this issue, is that a quorum reduction doesn't necessarily speak to being for or against. It's actually neutral, too. It's just as easy to have a... On a smaller quorum, to have a smaller number of people and a 2/3 vote, be able to influence the decision.
Completely agree.
And the same is true the other way around in terms... So, I don't think it speaks to, you know, a preference for voting yea or nay as much as it maybe backstops the idea that, you know, come, it's, you know, it's very important. And also, we have some exigencies that are pretty unique to this situation that point to the fact that we really want to try to get this done, you know, in this timeframe, even though it's, you know, it's just what's required. It's a volatile world out there for real estate.
I'd just like to reiterate the point I made a few minutes ago, which is it may be more important that you have that lower quorum figure for the second one, depending how Scott decides to proceed. But if you start losing people, it gives you, as I said, more of a cushion before you're in a position where somebody could challenge a quorum.
Yeah.
I object. You're making the second one the main ones. The second one...
Well, this was thinking if people wouldn't stick around for the second article, Bill.
Well, you just have to explain to people why they have to stick around. I mean, you have to explain at the same time you're asking for the vote for the first one.
So, the first one is for the land disposition. The second one is the building R, right? Is that 10 or 13?
I'm willing to defer to the moderator on this call.
In order, I don't know that there were numbers, one or two. They haven't come to me so far that way. So, I got...
Okay.
This is all... This was not... All of these considerations, I don't know. It's a matter of prominence.
I mean, we could have changed the zoning in August when I pointed it out when the bid came in, and I said, it's not completely compliant. You're going to have to change the zoning. I mean, it's... And you could change it again if you had to. I mean, I don't see Trinity backing down for 40 units because people left before the vote.
That's fair. If the... So, the way it's published, Article 1 is the land disposition, and then the zoning is Article 2. If we lost quorum on Article 2, but we passed Article 1, I don't... Trinity would just say, we're going to have a whole year before we actually have to do that. So, it's not a fatal failure.
You may have other zoning changes.
It could be, yeah. So, I mean, it makes sense to do it now, but it's not... That's not a fatal flaw. My sensitivity has to do with the risk that we're exposing the town to. If we don't get the quorum that we set for the meeting itself, I don't see a fallback between now and probably next October because people in September will want more time to think about it. So, basically, I see a delay going from June. If this was May, we probably wouldn't even need to have this discussion. We'd say, let's see what happens with our original quorum, and we would be fine. It's just because it's June. There's probably no realistic fallback date until we just push this whole thing out. And that, I'm concerned about...
We have reason to.
The credibility of the town with the developer for that reason. On the other hand, the meetings we've had that have to do with the state hospital, if we suddenly have gotten to the point where people in this town don't care deeply about the state hospital and don't care deeply about CAM, to where they're willing to come on the 21st, even with a relatively higher quorum, I'll be very surprised. I actually think people will care enough. So, I see it as a risk that we're exposing ourselves to that we could avoid by not doing that. But I, you know, in the end, it's 25 people. And if Pete, you think it should be 150, I'm not going to argue. And let the record show that although we didn't listen to Laurel entirely, we listened to her a little bit. That works okay, you know? It's reinforcing the notion that the Board of Selectmen is not an autonomous body that dictates what we do all the time, just some of the time. So...
I feel like I'm sitting on the leash law discussion again where we took it off.
Leash law.
And then that cost us the name, right? So, now, let's hope 25 people don't make a break. I don't want to be at this table the following week.
Add the leash laws, the third article.
Yeah, and then we'll get them.
Then Scott would put that first, and everybody would be in a foul mood. So...
Is there a motion?
I would like... Will we kick ourselves if by chance, just by chance?
Of course we will.
Right? Why do we want to do that to ourselves when we know that we're not doing something that's unlike any other towns around here?
Pete, why do we want to do that to ourselves?
I don't want to change the quorum at all, so I guess that's why I'm getting to 150 instead of 125.
I don't think anybody wants to change a quorum.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's getting nothing to that.
You know, less discussions that we've been having about that. So, I mean, I don't really think... I don't... I'm not in favor of changing, you know, quorums, but I am convinced that in this instance, because of the gravity, the time demands, the expense of...
So, for the integrity of... I'm talking to the two of you here. For the integrity of this process, given that some people out there will see whatever we do as being manipulative to some degree or another, I would prefer to see us three selectmen unified in whatever it is we do. And I will go in either direction. Are either one of you willing to accept the others?
I just... But I find funny, and I'm just saying this, Pete, because you started your discussion when you literally started positioning as, I, you know, I look at all the other towns around us, and we have the highest. So, that was like, okay, so then going to 125 is more like the towns around us.
Yeah, but...
But I'm...
I don't know that that's...
I don't know if that's the argument for this. You know, we have a quorum. So, what the other towns have decided, that's been a... Like, some towns have decided to go to zero or something, or it's very small quorums because whoever was thinking that, we thought that was going to drive more attendance. So, the fact is true, yes, we've always conducted our town meetings with a higher quorum, but that doesn't mean those towns are not getting a higher number than we're getting just because their quorum level is at 75 or 100 people. Look, I think it's... And also, going back to the point, it's incumbent for us to get the people to come, the people in this room, the people who have access to, you know, as well, to communicate that. And the people will come because whether it's one... The difference between having a vote in which there were 137 people that were over 125 and less than 150 is still going to be nearly as crazy.
Sure.
Disappointing, right? So...
Well, let's just not...
I think we're actually worrying about something that's not going to happen. I think we're going to have a good turnout. I think people are very interested in the hospital development.
So, we have a single number.
So, the 125 works?
Anything works, but I'm at 150.
Or we could split the difference and make it 137.
Or 137 and a half, because it is 137. We've got to whip the over.
All right, yes.
I think the fact that you are arguing yourselves into higher number...
Because 150 is... I'm not going to... I might have to hold the thing up.
Okay. Thank... Well, Eileen, thanks. I think we have convergence at 150. Pete, you made a motion that we reduce the quorum to 150. Do I have a second?
You do. Let's just hope this isn't monstrous all over again.
I got it. I got it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It carries 3-0, we'll drop the quorum to 150. Let, let no one claim that we're manipulating this process.
Can I make a suggestion for the meeting?
For the meeting? Yeah, not for the quorum. The quorum's off the table.
The meeting that's coming.
You're talking about the town meeting?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the Trinity information session.
Information meeting on Thursday.
You ought to, somebody ought to, whether it's Todd or, or Gus, if you speak for the committee or anything else, you ought to start out with something to the effect of the importance of the zoning law, how it falls, the zoning change, how it falls within the, you know, the scope of the first article and how the two are tied together and how it's important for people to stick around, to show up, number one, and number two, to stick around. That would be the place to at least get...
Well, we haven't made our decision yet on how that will go. That's going to be the moderator's decision on how the article...
But either way, the idea that there are two, well, it's kind of what I did here was that when people read this, if they haven't paid any attention, they'll think that there's an article about, about just land disposition. And they'll go, what the heck is this? 500 feet of sewer line? Yeah. And so I think it does deserve, you know, if people show up for that information meeting, that does deserve some few, you know, a little bit of time to explain what you're going to see in the articles, why you're seeing two articles, why the article on the land you're seeing has this other rider attached to it and why that makes sense. So I'll take that advice and I'll get with Todd and we'll figure out how to, how to do it. We'll both be there Thursday night, so one way or the other, it'll get covered. Yep, okay. We good? We're good. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And this is a suggestion from Chris Pass that we can look at to make sure that we drive as much attention to the special town meeting as possible.
Yes, and a lot of that has already been undertaken, so.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Yep, that'll be coming up.
That's a great idea, Chris, to basically get, get all of the various leaders of different organizations here in town to reach out, to encourage their constituencies or their contacts or the people that they routinely run across to encourage them to show up. And it would help a lot with getting new residents to attend. That's probably true. The people that are the newest maybe just aren't paying, they have been paying eight years of attention to what's been going on.
I'm sure those people have never even been up to the state hospital, right? So they can't appreciate this whole...
Some of it, some of it, and incidentally, if anybody's listening, the CAM's launch, summer launch party, I guess it is, is this Saturday. If you have not been up to the state hospital on a sunny, warm day when CAM is doing something, please go there. It's, it's, it's actually for all my involvement with this place. I've, I find myself, when I went with the Daffodil weekend and then with the, the bands that came, it was weird. It wasn't when I first got there. It was when I was getting ready to leave. You see all these people moving around. The other buildings aren't even fixed up yet, except that you suddenly, I could just see a community, a vibrant place where people lived, that I can see CAM being an important part of it.
Yeah.
So understand this as more than merely a building project. Understand, you know, to, to Bill's point early on, this is, this is a momentous decision. It is a big deal. Make sure you understand what's there. If you don't like it, then, you know, you don't like it. But make sure you see what I think of as the aesthetic of it, not just the, the mechanics. And Saturday is a good time to do it because they get the summer launch party, so.
Well, and I'm sure we'll be up there reminding people about the special town meeting because you're going to see a lot. I've been up there to, for all the events, tons of little kids. They'll have the barbecue truck up there this weekend. It's just, it's just so awesome. That's why I'm so passionate to just have, and you know, close your eyes and in seven years, everything's clean and you've got all that going on, less than seven years, but.
All right. Well, we're, that was item four of, of 16.
No leash law.
No leash law. Actually, five, five was dropped, so we go number six, discussion, I think we covered six. Discussion of the Medfield State Hospital redevelopment by Trinity Financial, special town meeting scheduled for June 21st. I think we've beaten that one to death for tonight.
Little did you know.
Unless there's questions from the audience. Bill?
No, no, sorry.
Okay, that was, that was a hand up of, that was a hand of surrender. Please, stop, stop. I got it. Item seven, vote to sign the agreement for allocation of annual costs for the Department of Education end-of-year pupil and financial report. I think this was a report from Andrew, as I recall?
This is Andrew. This was a recommendation. I believe the last time we signed it was 2005. And the new auditing firm that we brought in just thought it would be nice to update and have the newer boards sign it. But nothing's changed and the accounting office is not recommending any change in the methodology of how we do it. Mostly because everything we charge is actual costs. So we definitely don't want to change that.
Okay. So, so basically, motion to sign the agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Christine, who signs? Is that all three of us?
Uh, just to confirm, it is actually the chair.
Just the chair?
Yep.
Modify that, so authorize the chair.
Yeah, authorize the chair, sorry. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. These days, I'll develop the discipline to make sure I've answered that question before I ask for a motion. Number eight, approve collective bargaining agreement with the Medfield Permanent Firefighters Association, Local 4478, IAFFAFLCIO, for July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. I would point out that this is the first contract I can remember that was actually signed before the start of the term. So I just want to acknowledge the negotiating teams on both sides for having been able to do that.
It's a, it's a very good contract and it was a, it was a very nice process working through the, with the fire department and the collective bargaining team. It's very nice to get that done. This is, you're voting to sign it? This is actually... Okay. Okay. Actually, more of formality, you approved the collective bargaining agreement when you signed the MOU back in the spring. I think it was actually before you joined. And then this was approved at town meeting through the personnel article. So this is a formality in, in signing it, but.
And this one requires all...
All three signatures.
Three signatures.
Yep. Three copies, three signatures.
Motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Carries 3-0. Three sign.
Is that somebody we know?
It's the first dog.
Uh, next.
It is. Everybody's here in spirit.
Vote to sign the CDC COVID-19 and influenza vaccination program provider agreement.
Yes, this is one of the projects that Brenda Healy, our new public health nurse, I'm just going to keep calling her new, she's been here for almost a year, but I'll just keep calling her new. Our public health nurse will begin doing COVID-19 and flu vaccinations. If you remember, a few months ago, you signed off on the grant for her to get the refrigerators and in order to be able to store the vaccines. So now the second step in this process is actually getting the vaccines.
Who's eligible for shots? Schools or...
The public health nurse will be able to give it to anybody.
Anybody.
Yep, yep. So she'll run various clinics.
And this is focused only on COVID-19, so.
And influenza. And regular, the regular influenza, yep. Yeah, in the past, we had the, the VNA when they were under contract with us. They did our flu shot program. And then unfortunately, right before COVID, we had to drop off with them. And Brenda has decided to pick it back up again, and so we'll run a few different clinics.
So when we get to flu, flu shot season, that's again, anybody, is, that'll be eligible for anybody in town that wants it?
Correct. Depending on the number of vaccines she's able to get from the state will determine how many clinics and how we can run that, so.
Now it's when it starts, sir.
Absolutely, yep.
I would move to vote to sign the CDC COVID-19 and influenza vaccination program provider agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Passes 3-0. And all three of us say?
Yep.
You all three say?
Actually, let me double check. I believe you're actually authorizing me to sign it or the, because it's online. Yes, I'm sorry, you're actually authorizing me.
Okay, authorize it to town administrator.
So moved.
I apologize. Brittany left me a note saying that.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Christine signs. I think I would be more trainable than this. Vote to accept a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Shared Streets and Spaces Program for Safety Improvements along Main and North Street in the amount of $145,411.67. 67 cents. And authorize the town administrator to execute, oh, thank you. Authorizes town administrator to execute the state grant contract documents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Carries 3-0. Fortunately, that one had.
Thanks to Nick and Sarah for getting that.
Yes, we're very happy with the work they've been doing on the grant writing lately.
Next, vote to accept winter recovery assistance program roadway funding in the amount of $255,730 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and authorize the town administrator to execute the state grant contract documents. Just quick, this, is this a special fund? So this is fixing up the winter damage to roads, except this year, they're actually sending us money.
They're, they're sending us additional money based on the harsh winter. We can use it for resurfacing, reconstruction, signage, basics, basically supplemental roadway funding, so.
Does anybody that drives North Street is extremely grateful for that?
This will be very helpful to us.
I would move the question as set forth in the agenda, number 11.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. 3-0. Next is vote to sign an agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for participation in the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program for grant funding eligibility.
So moved.
Yes. This is an interesting one. This is actually not for us to receive any funding. There's no funding on the table. There's no guarantee of funding, but you have to be signed up for this program if you ever wanted to be eligible, so.
All right.
I know.
So, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. 3-0. See, and you all thought I wasn't going to be able to get to number 16 very quickly. Number 13, vote to appoint Annette Wells for the open position on the Council on Aging Board.
So moved.
Absolutely. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're Annette, huh? No, oh, okay. I just wondered. You were, you were smiling so, you were, you were, you were smiling so much, it's gotta be Annette.
I would move that we appoint the mystery person to some committee.
I move the, the microphone around.
Anybody, anybody that's willing to show up to our meetings, we want to put them to work because they're not going to be a quorum problem. Okay, citizen comment, any, any?
I have nothing registered for that this evening.
Nothing registered? Given that we're, we never have anybody registered, does anybody want to say anything before we? Okay, fresh out. Let's see, nothing, I know, no, nothing. Okay, we're just, I know I was looking for trouble by even raising that question. There's nobody there. Number 14, grant a common vidler license to new owners of the, of Royal Pizza for the calendar year 2022. Oh, wait a minute, this is a consent agenda, and then there's two more. The Medfield Energy Committee requests permission to post signs at the usual locations to advertise the electric vehicle show from 6/23 to 6/26. And then the third one is to grant, grant, to approve Paul J. Narkovich of Troop 10, a certificate honoring his achievement earning the rank of Eagle Scout.
So moved.
And I, so a motion to approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, that carried 3-0.
Okay, now, do it, do it.
Mr. Advocate?
Hello.
Oh.
Have I been recognized by the board?
Yes, you have.
No, I haven't been recognized by some of the people on the board. I'm Catherine White. I'm actually here representing the Medfield Energy Committee.
Ah, okay, sorry, Catherine.
And you all have approved the Medfield on the car, Charles Car Show. And they have graciously allowed us to carve out a section for electric vehicles. And so we have an opportunity for people to come up and ask local drivers about their cars, what it's like to own one, what do you do about range, charging, all the, all the things, and to see if, if a car is, is right for them. So no sales, just people talking to other people that love cars. And so we'd like to put up a number of signs. They've actually been funded by Tomcat. They had a little money left over, so, and certainly, and, and certainly linkage to what they do as well, so.
Do they, do you offer test drives?
We are going to have a joint test drive program in the fall that will be with salespeople coming out from different dealerships, obviously. They want to keep an eye on the car. And so you might see me again.
I was thinking more like a race around the high school track or something.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, we were going to do Midfield State. We thought Midfield State would be a lot of fun.
We could do the pod inside there.
Yeah, yeah. That's true.
And so, you know, we're looking forward to, this will be a small show. We've got about a dozen cars or so that'll allow us to have. But we're looking forward to it. And we've already had, we have nine different models. So we're trying to show variety, you know? If you want something small, I'd like to put a shout, shout out. I would love to have a truck there because trucks make a big difference. And we're still, still looking for our, our truck driver. So if you know anybody, you can put them in, in touch with me. But it should be a lot of fun.
And so, and so the only question comes with the wording on our agenda. It says, "The Medfield Energy Committee requests permission to post signs at the usual locations to advertise the electric vehicle show from 6/23 to 6/26." It's the signs from 6/23 to 6/26, not the show?
We, we were hoping for actually two weeks before. We understand that we can get them out there. Two weeks, I'm not sure where the 23rd came from, but if that is...
It's not a four-day show, is what you're saying. It's not 23.
It's, it's the 26th, yeah.
Well, the car show is, but you never know what these guys with electric vehicles might be doing.
But yes, we were hoping to get out there two weeks beforehand, if that is suitable. And, okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely, two weeks.
Yeah. We can, we can probably just do that without a vote. Yes, you got two weeks, go ahead, and whatever that 6/23, 6/26 means.
The town meeting note at the bottom of each of those signs.
The good place to educate.
That would work, that would work. Let's see, meeting minutes, so.
That one, 16, did you do that? Oh, sorry, you did.
Yeah, 16's done. So we have meeting minutes. Once again, Eileen, for the time being, you are...
I'm up.
You're, you're exempt. Pete, the overachiever that you are, I think every meeting minute that Brittany had, you've already reviewed and commented on.
I, I hope so. I haven't seen any new ones, so I might come up to date.
I was grateful that Brittany didn't put the full list of minutes down. Here's what I've got. The first three, August 17th, 2021, August 25th, 2021, February 1st, 2022, are all fine with minor comments. August 17th, got to double check the document list at the end. That was just because of a question mark. And February 1st, 2022, there were some minor edits, just, I mean, she knows because they go into the Google Doc.
Yep, she takes care of that.
February 15th, 2022, is fine, except it's, I said, double check page two. Give me a second here. I got to get the right browser up. It's this one. Question two refers to Medway. And I think it probably is supposed to say Medfield. Let me see if I can, I got to find the right one. This is, that's 8/25. Hold on, give me a second. That's 8/25. I need two more over. Catherine, thanks for coming. Thanks for your patience. Apologies for not knowing who you were at the very start.
That's all good. And I, I am new in town, even though I just lived right up the street. And we're having the Sustainable Medfield Leadership Meeting tomorrow. We have 26 town groups, and I will make sure that they all know to tell their constituents to come to the town.
Thank you for, that's...
Thank you.
Catherine, Catherine, do you want to let people watching know what time Sustainable Medfield meets tomorrow? If they want to attend?
It's at 3 o'clock at the library, but that will be the leaders of the groups.
Oh, that's, it's, it's not done by Zoom, so people can attend from home?
Sorry.
Okay, all right.
No, no. Anyways.
This would be a good practice for showing up in Florida tomorrow. This is good.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll rally the troops.
There you go. Okay, so page two of August, of February 15th, there's a place, hold on, I just have to get to it. The statement is, the very last bullet, "Mr. Markucci suggested penning a comment letter to the state DHCD, listing some perspectives from communities like Medway that don't have a tax basis to absorb the cost." I assume he meant Medfield, or he said Medfield, unless you got to him, Mark.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're reading.
February 15th, meeting minutes?
Oh, meeting minutes, I'm sorry. I was looking for the comment and I said, oh, Mike said our meeting. Sorry.
February 15th, meeting minutes, page two, at the bottom, last bullet. It says Medway, and I think it's supposed to say Medfield.
It's probably Medfield.
And then this one's even more miscellaneous, except it might be right. I just read it and said, is this really right? And that's page four, last line, in fact, I'll read the paragraph. "Mr. Murray asked if we have a clear view of how the relief funds are supplementing the budgets." the budgets, Mrs. Treewiler said, if, Ms. Treewiler said, "If you review the school committee presentation Dr. Marsden presented," they have balloons called SR3 grants. Now, it may be that those are graphic balloons on the presentation?
I believe they are, but we'll change how that's written.
Okay. So those are the only two things there, so February 15th is good. March 1st, the albatross comes back again, and it is still not.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I, I think somebody keeps slipping it by, thinking, I'll finally not check it and just give up on it. That's the one with the intersections.
With the intersections.
And it's not addressing the six intersections, it's only addressing, and I have a comment in there that talks about it, so it, it's, you know, it's there, it's documented.
We'll do it.
It's just nobody's reading my comments, which is perhaps understandable, but all the same, we need that. Town administrator.
So you're approving the 17th, 25th, and the 1st?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. So we're talking about approving the August 17th, 2021, August 25th, 2021, February 1st, 2022, February 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Can you second? You can't second, because you're not voting.
No, it was a lot.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Two, nothing, one abstention. Okay.
We've actually talked significantly about what I was going to remind people was just to attend the meeting on June 9th at the Public Safety Building to hear again from Trinity. Please check out the Medfield State Hospital website, Sarah and Nick and Todd have been putting all of the information that we're getting up there. If there's something up there that doesn't answer your question, please feel free to email us, and we'll get an answer out to you right away.
And next is, next meeting dates, January 14th, that's next Tuesday.
June.
Yeah, June, sorry, June 14th, next one, next Tuesday, June 21st, special town meeting, and I guess we, well, we always plan a selectman's meeting before that meeting, although we may or may not.
Yeah, we may or may not need it, but we'll do one, you know, at six.
Okay.
I was going to say at six, but we'll be doing it at five.
Selectmen reports.
All righty, nothing, not too, too crazy, Memorial Day Parade, my first one, very fun, that was a, a nice service, nice, nice turnout from the town. I love the fact that people kept going right along as we went from the green to the cemetery up to Dale Street, and then.
That was nice to have the woman deliver the.
Oh, fantastic.
Speech, and also, she's a teacher at Dale Street, I thought that was really cool.
Yeah, I saw she, she, I think she spoke with the seniors as well, but then attended graduation, which was fantastic, just a night, they had a great day, which I was so happy for the class, great day, the service, all the essays were fantastic, the gentleman that we'll be honoring at the Eagle Scout, what a beautiful voice, holy smokes, when he sang National Anthem, oh my goodness, so very nice day, great turnout.
Is he the one that sang at Memorial Day?
Yes.
And he sang at the memorial event as well.
Boy, does he have a great voice, yeah. He plays the tuba, I found out, in the band, when I remember telling him what a good job he did on Memorial Day.
Amazing. And then I, I met Denise Garlick this morning for coffee, it was just basically an orientation meeting with MSBA, so they, just talking with Eileen Murphy, not representing the town, not representing the selectmen at all, and it was very clear, and that, so when we wrapped up, that, that was the intent, just as a rookie, you know, just Denise wanted to kind of introduce me and let me have that as part of my orientation, so fantastic to meet, I don't know if I told you, I met with Jack McCarthy and Matt Donovan, so super nice, and getting ready for, I will, I will be going to the Boy Scout, Eagle.
And do we, we have, is that certificate?
Certificate's in there, ready to go, yep.
So if, are you, are you going to go to that?
When is it, next Saturday?
This Saturday.
1:00?
This coming Saturday, 1:00 at UCC, I believe it was.
Yeah, if one of you can take the certificate with you, that would be good.
And then, and I'll, and in that morning, I'll be at the CAM event at 11:00, do the 10 or 11, if you go, 10 starts, but I have it on my calendar.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I can't make it, I'm going to be out of town.
So Pete is going to make it as well?
I'll, I'll try to get there, yeah, I have to look at my calendar.
So you, so you should take the certificate.
No, I'll take the certificate, I certainly want to show up, but I just wanted to let, if they're asking me, I just want.
Maybe I should give Eileen this.
Sure, sure, I wrote it down.
That was the, I don't know if you got a copy.
I did, I got this.
You did, so you have it already, okay.
I just wanted to check with you guys to see what the status was.
Pete, you can have it if you want, I will, I can't make it, I'll be out of town.
Okay, I'll take it, yeah, I don't remember seeing it.
Okay. Pete, send the report out.
I, I would just second how, well, I thought the Memorial Day Parade went, I thought it, I found it hard to march a new route, but it, and I missed going to the Legion, because I always thought that that was a fun part of the Memorial Day Parade, but it's a nice combination of informality and, and remembrance and formality, I think it works very well for our town. There was a Tomcat meeting that I went to in the middle of the day today, they're, they're trying to button up the final Climate Action Plan report that they're going to present to the town, and so that's coming soon. I had office hours last Friday, the first Friday of every month, at the center, and I had an hour-long conversation with Gabby Harrison, who wants to work on traffic safety, traffic calming issues for the town, and I sent her CV along to Christine and Nick and Brittany, and has it, have you guys seen those yet or not? Didn't get to you then, okay.
Not yet.
So that she wants to.
If we're going to put more people on the committee, then we would advertise that we are seeking more people, so I just haven't had a chance to do that.
So she wants to, she wants to work on safety, traffic safety issues in town, and I suggested to her that the most likely best place to do that is at the Safety Committee. And, and she actually, her husband Warner Harrison was somebody that I worked with on the first volunteer thing I did for the town was to study whether to pave Causeway Street or not, and Warner was one of the people not wanting it paved, and, and, but he produced a, a report that was just, and she brought it along, actually, I hadn't seen it, because it was from like 97 or 98, and, but I, I was reminded of what an excellent job of putting things together Warner did, and, and sure enough, she reminded me that he's an engineer at MIT, so, and that's it for me.
Really, Memorial Day Parade was a beautiful day, nice, good parade, nice to actually be able to have the parade again after a couple of years, it's sort of winging it a little bit, and then, and it, this is, this is the first year, I've been on the Memorial Day Parade Committee for a few years, but have not gotten particularly involved with it for several years until this year, and I kind of have a little better appreciation for the effort that goes into coordinating and figuring stuff out. It sounds, seems like it's simple, it only lasted for an hour, but you're moving a bunch of people through the town, and it actually requires some, some good thought to get that all pulled together, so I was happy to see that. Eileen and I were at the graduation this past weekend, if you haven't seen it yet on the patch, Colleen took that last picture of us.
It looks good, yeah.
It's a nice picture, I liked that picture, it was very nice, but once again, it's, it's, every year you see another class of students graduating from Medfield, and every year you see a confirmation that Medfield does a lot of things right, and I think that was true this time around, as it's been in past years. So well-run, I think it was the nicest weather for graduation that I've been to in terms of being pleasant, so even though I had a suit on, it was not impossible to have a suit on and sit there through the whole thing, so that was great. I thought the speakers were good, they were humorous, insightful, they had different talks, and they were the appropriate length, I guess, I won't say they were mercifully short, they were just the right length for what the students should do, I thought they did a nice job. Let's see, what else today, this week, I actually listened in to a presentation by the Mass, the Climate Action Network, I got invited to a webinar yesterday morning on zero carbon, there's a new fund that, well, there's a fund that they're, they're lobbying for, I thought it was a fund, so I signed up just to find, it was money, and it's like, well, let's see what this is all about, but it turned out, they're actually lobbying to get the state to allocate $250 million to do deep zero-carbon redesigns on buildings, so they, the, the issue is, if you're going to try to get down to, you know, approach zero carbon, one of the biggest carbon emitters here, as well as the state, is the buildings that we have.
True.
So I figured I'd listen to see what they had. It turned out that, my impression from the presentation is it's primarily targeted toward large-scale, kind of in-city apartments, mostly, I think they were targeting like low-income type apartments where it can make a difference with people in terms of their heating costs, their cooling costs, so the, the things that they were doing seemed interesting, they were particularly interested in the state legislators or reps that were there, which told me they were mostly trying to convince the reps to support this funding allocation out of the kind of COVID relief funds, so I don't, I didn't come away thinking that the concept or this fund would necessarily be particularly useful for us, but it was interesting to, to listen to what they were trying to do and to get where they were coming from. So that was yesterday, and then, like you, today I also had a phone call with Denise Garlick, and that was, that was, we covered a range of topics, and it was a good, a good overall discussion, and then I met with Steve Tean, who maybe most people would know in the, in the town, he's running for state rep to fill Sean Dooley's slot, so he and I sat down for about an hour and a half.
Oh, good.
To talk about things, had a lot of good thoughts about policies that he thought were important in the town, or to the state. What he would do as a state legislator, based on his reflection of this town's needs and other towns' needs, it was a good conversation, I hadn't realized that he's actually been a legislative aide, so he has a lot of, he already has a good amount of political experience at the, up in the legislature. I know there's two other good candidates that, I've met Kevin Calcutta, briefly met Marcus, I forget his last name, but there, I actually feel like we're not going to come out too bad with this election, but we got a, we got a hometown candidate here who has experience, and I thought had some good, good thoughts, so, and I think that's, that's it for, for me. Anything else from anybody about anything?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, another one in the books.
We're closed.